Good evening, everyone. Good evening, welcome to our traveling Lansing School District Information Study Session of the Board of Education. Thanks for joining us this evening at the beautiful Patton Guild. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Whoa. I got the power. Dr. Boddy, Ms. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Ms. Hodgson. Mrs. Lawrence.
Here.
Ms. Lilge.
Present.
Mr. Lopez, absent. Mrs. Moore. Dr. Rodriguez. Mrs. Willis. Present. Quorum is present.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No ma- no ma'am.
Okay. Any other business additions to the agenda from the board? Yep. We're gonna add, we're gonna add a closed session after our presentation this evening to discuss contract negotiations. Rodriguez.
Can we have the regular appointment?
What?
If it's not a regular appointment, that is I S S maybe, still making the process.
We can. Yep. Thanks, Doc. Okay, then we'll move on and start our presentation for this evening. We have with us Dr. Sarah O'Neil, and I'll let you take it away and introduce your people and.
Absolutely. You're my, you're my people. How are you doing this evening? So grateful to be here today and share with you both some barriers and wins that I think that you'll be very pleased with in response to the systemic equity review and the work that we've already started. So today, our presentation is called Diversity Equity Inclusion: From the Field to Outputs and How We Will Contribute and How DEI Has Done That. I also have Dr. Carter next to me, who you're well acquainted with. She's gonna be speaking and she'll be working with 11 of our schools. And then I have Peyton Salter, who is Director of REEP, to also tie and share with you how their work ties into DEI. Okay? Next slide. Absolutely. So what I just outlined is what you will hear tonight. We will start with Dr. Carter Andrews to be mindful of her time, and I will build off of you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. O'Neil. Good evening. It's nice to see you all again and to be able to share a little bit about some of the work that I am engaging in with the district, both as a partner in a research way, but also a reciprocity way that advances your goals around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm going to talk a little bit, and I know Dr. O'Neil will kind of integrate and connect dots around how this work is layered into the larger framework and plan that you all have going forward in this area, but about this particular research project that is a really university-community partnership entitled Racial Equity in Discipline for Black Students. You might hear me use the terminology REEP BS for short to refer to the project. It's funded by the William T. Grant Foundation and the Brady Education Foundation. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. I just want to introduce you to members of the project team from the MSU side. All of the project team members are in the College of Education, but we cover different units in the college. I am obviously in the Department of Teacher Education. I chair the department. I'm also a faculty member there, and you can see the areas where my own research and scholarship focus. We also have Dr. Cheserae Warren, who is a principal, a co-principal investigator on the project. He is at Vanderbilt University, and you can see the overlap with my own work, but also some nuances that really focus on teacher empathy with black male students particularly. Dr. Brian Beverley is our Director of the Office of K-12 Outreach, and he really focuses on providing professional and technical support to schools across Michigan. So he and his team members are constantly in the field. And Dr. Kenneth Frank is a faculty member in Measurement and Quantitative Measures, and his work looks at social network analysis. And here, this is really helping us think about how teachers talk with one another shapes their own discipline practices. Next slide, please. I'm not gonna go through these tables. We know the narrative around over-referral and over-suspension of black students nationally, and so that's not new. I think you all are familiar with that narrative and the data for that nationally and both in the Lansing School District. But some things I do like to highlight is that this over-referral and over-suspension is not caused by quote-unquote "worse behavior" among black students. We know that there are culturally nuanced reasons why black students are over-referred and over-suspended. And so this work helps get at that, which will also help teachers in this district better understand and think through situations before they refer and/or suspend. This is not just a problem in LSD. This is a problem, as I said, in many school districts in Michigan and across the country. Next slide, please. I just want to give you a sense of our research questions, because I think you'll see the diversity, equity, and inclusion connections to the work you're doing. We have three levels of questions: school-level questions, teacher-level questions, and network-level questions. At the school level, there's an intervention that I'll tell you about in just a minute that teachers are participating in, and we're trying to understand how does the intervention impact school-level referral rates and suspensions for black students? And then how does that intervention also impact teacher empathy and critical race consciousness? And you might be saying, what are these terms? Empathy, we understand. Critical race consciousness is a little more loaded, but we're really interested in understanding how does teachers' racial awareness and knowledge then shape whether or not they make a particular move around discipline? And can it minimize the number of referrals and suspensions? At the teacher level, you'll see that that's question number two. And at the network level, as I said, we want to understand how are teachers' behaviors and beliefs affected by their teacher friends in their own building? We know teachers talk, so how might my decision-making around discipline shape Dr. O'Neil's decision-making in her classroom? And that's that level of network analysis. Next slide, please. The approach we're using for the intervention has already been piloted. We piloted the approach in the Flint Community Schools a few years back. This is a different adaptation of that approach. It combines PBIS with a racial awareness and knowledge intervention that we call the RACI. Okay? You'll see from the results on the slides that when we piloted this intervention in Flint, the data did show that total number of suspensions went down and subjective suspensions were decreased. We hope for the same types of odds and results in LSD. Next slide. So what are Lansing Public School teachers doing in this project, in this partnership? One of the things the district is doing is providing administrative data, data on referrals and suspensions for all of the K-5 schools, so that we as a project team understand what your data looks like. And then the district is helping facilitate our work in all K-5 buildings through this professional learning series called the RACI. So teachers are engaged in six professional learning sessions. They are three hours each, so it's 18 hours of professional learning. They do get sketches, so that's an incentive for that as well. They're surveyed two times throughout the year, and we interview a smaller group of principals and teachers. Next slide, please. I just want to give you a sense, this is a bit more information, you know, this is a research project, and so if writing occurs on this work, as it should, these schools would be anonymized and participants would be anonymized. But just so you understand what I mean by the partnership aspect of the work, all of the schools are not in the research project. The treatment schools are. And then we are still providing the professional learning to what we call the control group of K-5 buildings. Yes?
You said teachers receive sketches?
Yes.
What is that?
Continuing education units, CEUs. Sorry, but I actually don't know what sketches is. Set out.
I thought you meant like.
I always say sketches. No.
Here you go.
CEUs or sketches. Yes. 18 hours of continuing education units. So as you see, all of your buildings, all of the teachers who are volunteering are getting exposure to the RACI. Some buildings are in the study, others are not. But part of what we believe in by way of reciprocity is that all teachers should have access to the learning sessions. Just if you're curious, the topics of the six sessions are race and racism, implicit bias and microaggressions, empathy and perspective-taking, and then Sessions Five and Six, teachers actually work with discipline data in their building and then develop action plans for moving forward. Okay? Just wanted to give you that. For those of you who are visual learning learners, next slide, please. I want you to kind of, and this is my final slide, I'll walk you through what this looks like and what our hunches are, right? From a visual perspective. If you look at the intervention, first of all, we know that racism and societal attitudes and cultural beliefs, teachers bring those to school with them. And we know they have other types of professional learning throughout the year. But the RACI, the intervention, you see that circle there, is designed to enhance their understanding of the student context and increase their racial awareness about race and racism, and hopefully positively impact the way they relate to black students. If you see how the arrows are moving, the orange person is a teacher, right? And so we assume that, we hypothesize that if they're getting the RACI, they're now increasing their critical race consciousness and empathy. And then they talk to their teacher friend in the building, which is like the three green people, okay? And then our hypothesis is that by having this professional learning, they rethink the way they enact discipline and referral, and that ultimately we'll see some reduction in the disproportionality in Lansing Public Schools. So in this way, our work as an entree into DEI is looking specifically at issues of over-referral and over-suspension in this school district. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. O'Neil.
What I think is important to note about this work going forward is it was a choice for principals to participate. And so I held a meeting in a very transparent conversation with them. They have been, this is not new for them, and they unanimously wanted to participate and have their staffs participate. There are very few meetings where we unanimously agree on everything. So that is a huge indicator of progress, that all 11 principals were in support in the treatment group, and I really want to highlight that and celebrate that. Okay? All right, next slide. Thank you. I feel incredibly blessed. I'm gonna start with my DIFL team, was Department of Innovative Arts, PE, and Library. I took over this department this year and have enveloped them under the DEI lens. I feel this blast because the depth of my learning within my leadership has exploded as I apply my equity lens towards supporting our DIFL teachers in addition to the families we serve. Adults are important, too, and we need to take care of the adults so that in turn they take care of our students, and that is much of the work. The first thing I just want to make sure everybody is aware of for DIFL, the staff is certified teachers, just like a biology teacher. If they're not yet certified, they're working towards it with supports, which the district is providing as well. There's often a false narrative that can go around that they're not actual certified teachers, and that's simply not true. I struggled with these slides because I could do 100 slides on my DIFL team. If you are on my team behind me, could you raise your hand for me, please? Thank you. I struggled with what to share because we have accomplished so much, yet have so far to go. They have really, really welcomed me with open arms despite some of the barriers that they faced previously. And I think when I share the progress with their work, you will be inspired as well. Okay? So I want to be happy to report, just in two months, that we've hired three wildly talented music teachers, six physical fitness teachers, and six librarians. We've increased our team by 15 in two short months. I've highlighted on this slide some of the intentionality that we've done to become more diverse, and the team has been completely supportive of this. Next slide, please. In fact, you see on the left some of our screener questions. My team serves on the panel themselves. They are involved in the hiring process. We ask these difficult questions in the first 15 minutes. We are 100% focused on student achievement, and we do not have time to interview for hours if it's somebody that is not going to fit into our vision of being more inclusive. So we ask the difficult questions as a department and a family upfront. We ask about bias and privilege. We ask to see if the teacher can articulate how their own identity is either reflected or not reflected in students and how they would have to accommodate. We talk about choice and voice in the first 15 minutes. And that has been extremely helpful in the development of our team and to be most efficient, to be quite honest. They're extremely grateful to sit on the panels and feel involved, and it's something that I think other departments should start doing as well. Some are and some aren't. So as we are able to efficiently gauge where a person is at, I need to be clear, they don't have to be fully trained in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I just need to hear them be able to reflect and understand how identity and intersectionality helps and can provide obstacles within their teaching. They may not have the exact vocabulary, that's fine. We have rubrics and we have frameworks that help us to determine these decisions, and our conversation between team members is where the growth happens. I also want to talk about, in the middle section, I'm trying to hold off on librarians, but this is a book. My librarians are being extremely intentional in trying to use student voice and to reflect and incorporate topics that they want to study through identity, and we are working to intentionally use synergy to download reports and see what exact identities are reflected when they self-identify and what they would like to read about. So this is just an example that covers many, many races and cultures that librarians are being intentional with. The document on the right, we are just starting with that, but the DIFL team will have professional development with me this year. I will be able to develop my own team, which is extremely exciting. We will be working using the Historically Responsive Literacy Framework to tie in multiple initiatives across the district. We know that the CASL framework is extremely important to address the social-emotional. We understand that we need to teach past skills, we need to teach about identity, criticality, right? In addition to the skills, and this framework helps us do that. The socio-emotional is so important that it's tied throughout departments, it's within our MYKIP plan, and we are ensuring that we're aligned with the Office of Student Culture and the supports that they also. So this is just an example of the framework and how we intentionally think about how to marry the content that DIFL teachers teach and how to integrate it with several layers, with socio-emotional learning, with reading and math, and we have a ton of work to do, but we are motivated, and the goals that I'm seeing in personal growth plans are mind-blowing of how to integrate and how we will measure and be able to report to you. So that's very exciting work. That being said, I wouldn't be an effective leader if I did not have my team hear me speak out some of the barriers. And when I say the barriers, these are all things that we are supported with in central office, that we are moving forward with dismantling and making better. But again, there's still power in us just naming what we've been struggling a bit with. So with support in central office across departments, we are dismantling barriers that include access to synergy, just like general education teachers have. We are wanting the ability to enter our own grades for report cards as the arts team, to build relationships with families by having access and dealing with our own discipline. We are working on being trusted with school keys because we travel, and there's issues behind that, but we're working on it, so that's a positive. We really are struggling with access to classroom space. We have several PE sections that are operating during lunch when kids are in the gym, and so we're trying to innovatively be thoughtful about what we can do. Most important, I think it's important to note that my team really finds it more helpful if they have a school family. It's difficult on them to travel, and so we just want to speak that out, that they're hoping for school families instead of the situation currently that my art teachers are in, which I have four for the district. Ellen Trustram is teaching art, grades six through eight for the entire district. That is no easy feat. So thank you for listening to that, and we understand that we work intentionally for the removal of bias, and we're collective with each other, that there's no stopping us as far as achievement. Okay? Next slide. Okay. Could my librarians please stand up, or if you are a general ed teacher that served with my librarian team over the summer? Could you please stand up, and could we give them a round of applause? These are the Dewey decimeters. Let me just say this about librarians. Well, first, show your shirts off. These are their shirts that we're wearing. Can you turn around, please?
Oh, my gosh.
So we have a quote, and we were intentional to make sure that our general ed teachers have them, too, because this is important work. We're rebranding our department. Words matter. How we speak matters, and we're being intentional of all those things. Back to librarians. They are the most hidden resource that I have tapped into that is so exciting. These librarians can find out anything. They are sleuths. They can investigate. They can compile resources and book lists in minutes. And they're working very intentionally, and it will take us time to build trust between general ed, but they are craving to support general education reading scores. And so they are being very intentional in their work, and we will start to be more intentional with how we plan together. Right? So librarians. So we have a task force that we did over the summer, and that was in response to the amazing work that the board did about eliminating fines. And we were granted 3,000 hours to spend in the libraries, many of them not air-conditioned. And what I've learned about librarians is their drive. There's no ti- they don't have time to wait for moving trucks. They will move, they will stock down moving trucks and try to move libraries themselves. They are strong physically, and they will push back, but all in the right ways. And so we did. We spent 3,000 hours in libraries, and we cleaned them up significantly. And so I just want to bring light to that, and then I will bring, can happy to report some statistics of what we were able to move. Okay? Next slide? Oh, you may sit down. Thank you. All right. Sensitive topic, right? But part of being a librarian is to do some weeding. And weeding just means you intentionally move through your shelves by section to weed out anything using the ALA Guidelines, the American Library Association Guidelines. And so we look for all types of things. It may start with copyright age as an indicator, but that's just one layer. We're looking for misinformation, if something is culturally insensitive. We're looking at if it's just really old and unattractive to kids. It hasn't, we look at data to see if the circulation, if it's been checked out. And this weeding, just due to time constraints, hadn't been done systemically in a very long time. And it takes a long time to go library by library, let me tell you, and shelf by shelf. And we had new members we were onboarding, so we were also trying to build culture, and librarians disagree, let me tell you. And so those conversations were powerful. So I just want to share a couple examples with you. The book on the left, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, right? That would be an obvious indicator. That was in several schools, and we were intentional to make sure that we removed them all. There's other, there's other books that we really just need to open up the dialogue about that we're not sure about, right? And that middle book is just an example, right? So it's not enough just to open or see the front or open it to one page. If we saw an image like the middle book, then we would take the time to be intentional and flip through the rest and do consulting across departments to make an informed decision, right? The book on the right is interesting and controversial, and to be quite honest, none of us had the expertise. So in cases like this, we consulted with a cultural broker, the Native American Coordinator, who's been excellent in aligning with us and helping us understand what should be on our shelves and what should not. And we make mistakes, and sometimes we don't agree, and we'll weed again. But the work that's important is that we're having the dialogue, right? So overall, before the process, the average age of our copyright collections was about 1989, right? That indicator alone is not shocking until you start to layer in all the things that we look at. I'm pretty proud, though, that we've moved it just from weeding, not even purchasing. We've moved it all the way to the 2000s, right? We have one elementary that we're worried about, just because their collection was a little bit older, but you will see later in the presentation that we were intentional with grant money, and we will boost that library. Okay? I must say that I'm very proud that we have a male librarian represented as well to our team in both genders, and so that's exciting. Next, I want to be clear about Michigan libraries, both public and the school districts. Average about 20% of their collections dedicated to diversity, inclusion, and socio-emotional learning. We are proud to report that our library team has scoured the collection data, and our weeding pushed our average for DEI in our libraries above 30%. So that combined with how we're intentional in ordering is a very exciting thing to learn. So that combined with how we're intentional in ordering is a very exciting thing to learn. Next slide. Okay. Everett in Sexton. So our high school libraries over the summer were open four days a week, and students and staff were welcome to come in and use the library facilities. Lessons were taught in summer school, and it was a great opportunity to get book recommendations, check out books, and also, quite honestly, to have a quiet place to read and think. You will hear in the literature over and over testimony from students where they will say libraries have saved their life across the nation, just having that space to be able to go to. Also intentional at the high schools during the summer, our special education extended year classes took advantage of our libraries, and they came in for specific lessons, and they were intentional in planning together, which spoke volumes to the children. And every decision we make going forward with our collections is based on student voice, what they want to learn about, what they want to hear, and how we can accommodate it and listen, actively listen. I think I also think it's important to note that Beekman is without a library, and it's our intention over time to give them a model library for special education. We would love to do that, and we're being intentional. I have a librarian, I'm not sure if she's behind me, nope, that has a special ed background. That is extremely rare and a gift for us. REEP contributed to the task force by helping fund some of the hours, and so it was quite an experience. Would anybody from my task force library team be willing to share a bit of testimony? Lori? Lori Littlemars is our coordinator for elementary libraries. She does a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and so she was the day-to-day lead on this team, and I was consulting as much as I needed to in team building. We just want to know how the experience felt for you, being able to get ahead and get these libraries cleaned up.
So for me, it's one of actually finally getting the job done, and getting the job done to where my staff and my team can walk in and not feel overwhelmed by the new library that they've just been given walking into and finding it a disaster. For those of you who don't know what goes into library just besides seeing the kids and maintaining the collection and putting it back on the shelves, just the steps alone to take a book out of the collection, sometimes put it in a box, hope somebody else will come take it out for you versus load it in your car, take it to the paper gate or yourself at another school, which I may not have done, as well as waiting on deliveries from shipments of books from one school to the other, knowing we need it before the school year starts because now we have the time to do it, to scan them all, to import and export, to black out the barcodes, to make sure that the inventory number counts the way it's supposed to, that we have no dangling edges that's going to skew that statistical information for us. For me, the other experience was working with my wonderful team, getting to know them in even deeper level. I've been the media coordinator for 10 years, and in some cases, it's getting to know the new people, finding even more hidden talents that I didn't know exist, and in a lot of cases, it was just simply finding other ways to relate to each other and bond. It was something I can't even put into words, other than it was magical for us librarians, and it was great. Thank you so much for allowing us to do that work, because I can tell you from what I've seen of students so far in 12 buildings this year already, that they love it.
The snippet of video in the middle is from Everett's work with Joy Curry, their librarian. She asked if she could lead the Read Woke Initiative last year, and so much of our purchasing has been based on, these are students, obviously identity protected, this was to celebrate Women's History Month, and they, it's interesting, I'll tell you later, what they wanted collections developed on. We are looking to expand the Read Woke Initiative district-wide, and it's a challenge. It's a challenge for students to read, but it's based on their voice, and we'll be very excited to report on that as well. What you also see is a shift at the high schools from traditional shelving to what's called dynamic shelving. And dynamic shelving is like you would find at the bookstore. So it's a way for librarians to intentionally highlight maybe newer titles or the titles that reflect student voice, or if there is co-collaboration and research projects, we can quickly shift and move and do that as well. And the feedback from that, from students, has been quite positive. They would like a cappuccino machine, just so you know, right in the library. But we started with dynamic shelving. So those are the high schools, okay. The last thing I want to say about librarians are how grateful they were that we were able to send them to the MAMEE Conference, the Michigan Association of Media Education Conference. I saw them in days, take the bull by the reins and do the work that some of us just hadn't had time to get to. So I was able to watch them work together and co-collaborate new suggested policy, guidance, protocol for when we do have a citizen's request for review of instructional materials, and we will, we know that's coming. And so that information will be coming to you, just to seek your feedback and what you, direction you would like us to go before we take it to the policy committee. We know we need to be prepared for challenges, and we just are grateful for your support. They're a little nervous with these new collections, they're a little nervous about the pushback and how they should handle it. So it's just something that we've been talking about and to be prepared. Next slide. I would like to also highlight Ramona Henry. She is our Native American Coordinator, and she is who coordinated with us on the titles and the library that we needed, but she provides so much more. She is working with the Native American Heritage Fund grant on the work with the mascot at Sexton. And I just want to make sure that everybody in the room knows the next community input meeting is September 28th, and I hope to see you all there. Ramona's office is in the Welcome Center, and my librarians were spying, shocking, and saw some of her work around the classes that she provides. She teaches Native American language classes for local families that who were forced to assimilate at boarding schools and lost their native language. That is so incredibly powerful. We adore her, if you can't tell. And then she is willing to collaborate across departments, and so we're hoping to promote her work more with general ed teachers and see how we can integrate in this curriculum all year long, right? Be intentional all year long. Next slide. I think it's important sometimes to just talk the fiscal numbers of support that we've received. Different departments, especially in Central Office, are seeking to align with DEI. They really are, and they're excited about the work. So when they knew about the library task force, several came forward and offered both consultation and support fiscally. And so the STAR grant awarded, I should say allocated, 2,000 each for eight of our elementary academies, serving grades four through eight, to provide books with a focus on social justice, socio-emotional learning, financial literacy, and LGTQ, BTQIA, I always struggle with them. And those were not for the libraries, that order was actually for principals to have in their schools, and all that work was based on student voice of what students were wanting to learn about. They talk about entrepreneurship, they talk about writing business plans and how to get rich, and they talk about identity, and when we look at the data for our LBGTQIA data, we don't have much. Yeah, we don't have much, and so we had to be intentional about thinking about that. And that came up in the systemic equity review, too, kids seeking that. The REAP grant allocated 2,500 for Willow's library to focus on updating their nonfiction curriculum supports for those teachers. That was the collection that was dating a little bit further back than other collections, and so we just used their data, and we were supported by the REAP grant. Most recently, the REAP grant also allocated a full 25,500 to be split for our K8 libraries to support the same topics and to align. That is a very large deal. Our weeding that we did was about $32,000 worth of books, right? And so we, if you can believe it, held back as well.
Lori, do you want to say something about that?
There are 32,000 books, those times what?
I might have added it up in addition, with my Excel skills that Ben gave me through my Harvard data visualization class, right? And so those books are significant, $32,000 books. When I added it up in Excel, Lori's right, I got those numbers right, it's still over 20 grand. Like, it's significant. We could have weeded more, but it's not our intention to leave shelves empty, right? And so we're just going to continue the work and move forward, and so the REAP grant has also did that. And REEP is going to tell you how they align, next with Mr. Stalter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the Director of REEP. It's a federal teacher-school leader grant that has many initiatives that run throughout the district. Tonight, I'm just going to speak to the ones that are focused around DEI and the support of this wonderful work that you're hearing about tonight. In these three buckets, if you could change the slide for me, please, we really focus around human capital supports, educator quality supports, and our principals and school leaders at the central level. A couple of the bullet points that I would like to speak to you about this evening are leading equitable schools. This is a year-long experience for 18 school-level leaders and 12 central-level leaders, going through and working on becoming leaders in equitable schools. They go through very deep dive professional development each and every single month that provides them actionable steps in their leadership abilities right away. In coordination with that, they go into the schools and they are using those new skills with a coach right away throughout the entire year. Very excited about the development of our leaders in that program. It is all based around student voice. Equity is about student voice, and so our primary voice leading that work is our students. In the second bucket, our educator quality support system. We need to support our educators, and this year, we have really taken account of our wonderful educators and thinking more concretely on how to support them where they are at. We have several staff that are part of an alternative certificate program. We have new hires who are from a traditional four-year program. We have educators that are in their second and third year of being part of our Lansing family. This educator support network really is concrete in providing professional learning communities with like groups, and providing that professional development to help them where they're at, to get them where we need them. We provide instructional coaching and mentorship as well. The instructional coaching is a wonderful program that we have reimagined with this new REAP grant of providing instructional coaching to every single new hire to help them move the needle for our students and support them the way that the Lansing School District family wants. Another part of that is our Urban Fellow leaders. As you can see, Urban Fellows, part of the REAP grant is to really diversify our staff, and the Urban Fellows is one of the opportunities that we have recruited individuals from around the state who are diverse themselves in both their racial ethnicities, as well as their backgrounds and expertise coming to the district. We have four fellows currently who come from higher education, LCC, MSU, as well as other leadership school-level positions around the state, helping join and going through like a central admin internship of shadowing different departments, adding in their expertise as well as learning from us to see if they're a great fit to help us move forward in our initiatives as a district. And in the last category, a couple of bullets that I want to highlight are the educational equity modules for our aspiring leaders and new principals. We have 15 participants that go through 10 sessions through MSU and the K-12 outreach of really helping develop our new leaders and building them where they're at and helping them grow throughout the year. It has an equity lens because we are serving our students, and we need to be aware of our, the voice and who we are serving. And then in continuation with that, I also wanted just to highlight one program that we did for the very first time in the Lansing School District, a staff onboarding event. So we had well over 100 people hired to join our Lansing family this year, and I'm proud to say that we had an onboarding event to help, a week-long event to help them join our Lansing family and be ready on day one. We had them participate in activities and professional learning from every single department, from technology all the way through the DEI department, so they were ready to lead their classrooms in the Lansing family way. Over that five-day period, we had 108 participants. I'm very proud to say that we were in partnership with our LSCEA Union and LASSA Union as well, and they participated and supported the event, so I want to say thank you to those individuals who are in the room and who are not here. We ended the evening or the week with a showcase of Lansing itself, because actually, many of our new hires are not from Lansing, they are new to Lansing or Michigan, so we did a Lansing tour of showing them schools and the wonderful highlights of Lansing so that they felt connected to the community and were automatically invested in who they were
If we could just leave this slide up, this is the concluding slide, but I would just like to open up for questions or follow-up questions you might have had as you listened to us.
If you don't mind, I'll take a little executive privilege here.
Oh, of course.
And just, I want to first of all thank the three of you, but I also really want to thank all of the incredible team members that cared so deeply about this. For the community that is, you know, listening and cares deeply about this, we as a district and this board, this very courageous board at these wonderful tables in this wonderful building, made a decision to care about equity and put equity at the forefront of our decision-making. But if I was a community member, I would say, well, so what? And then what? And what I hope everybody realizes is the work that this board did was to start the actual work. And what you heard, this presentation, is about how we as a school district can do the work that makes things more equitable. It's not good enough to just say we care about it, it's not good enough to just pass these ideas as policies, we have to own it. And what I hope is that the community realizes that our first ISS this year is about this symbolically on purpose, because this is something that we are taking to heart and we are making sure that it is embedded throughout all of the work. And the work of Dr. Carter's in terms of how we deal with discipline and how it's disproportionate, the work of Dr. O'Neal in terms of how do we make the literacy and the libraries and all the work around us equitable, and then the work of Dr. Stalter, they're all doctors, I am not, I'm very jealous, in terms of the federal funding with REEP about how do we create all of our employees to make sure that we put our students front and center in all of their kind of glory. So thank you for that. I certainly want to turn it over to the board to ask questions and comments, but I think it really is important for everybody to put this in the place that it deserves, which is this is the actual work to make the difference for how kids can succeed better in this district. So, thank you.
Ms. Lowgie.
Thank you. Thank you for this tremendous work. Just to kind of piggyback on what you just said, Ben, about the actual work, I think for me personally, when the report came out from the Equity Office, I just, you know, thought, thank God, I'm not the expert, because I would have no idea where to start or what to do, and I just appreciate so much that you are all bringing your expertise to this together and working on this on so many different levels at the same time, and it's really exciting and enlightening. So really feel grateful that this is, that you're all here and that you're all doing this. I have two questions, and they're not really questions, they're more just like, can you talk a little more about? The first one is... Um, the first one is the barriers that you talked about for your team. Um, access to synergy, being entrusted with keys, access to classroom space, and the need for a school family. I wondered if you could tell us one suggestion for each one about how to, I'm sure you mentioned.
How much time do you have?
And then, the, the second thing I wanted to hear more about...
Why don't you look for that and I'll answer? Oh, you got it, okay.
Better? Okay. I think you talked about four sections of the study. Do you know what I'm, uh, racism, microaggressions, perspective, look at your own building data to move forward? I just wondered if you could just a little more about each one of those and what that looks like. So, I don't know, Dr. O'Neal, if you want to go first or something.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Uh, my team knows that we come to the table with solutions when we experience barriers, right? Uh, several things are already in play and, and several things we're working on, um, and, and executive team is sort of advocating for us, right? The access to synergy is simply assigning the DIFL teachers as additional staff to general ed teachers, which sort of, uh, makes them co-teachers. So, they'll then be able to see IEPs at a glance and see phone numbers. In the past, they've been operating on, if they have a discipline issue, they need to go to the general ed teacher or the secretary to get the contact information, right? That's a pretty easy fix. The keys, we're, we're being supported with. It's just a matter of, uh, a system to make sure that we're being responsible, they're signed in and out, um, just to make sure that all of our teachers are safe during lockdowns, right? And, uh, public safety's been incredible about that. The classroom space, I'm, I'm looking to you. Uh, I think that just being intentional when we build these new buildings, being, think, like, thinking about each of the arts and them having space and places to collaborate and a gym all day long would, would speak volumes, right? And, uh, I think those first steps would do miles. The homeschool, uh, the barrier is always been a question of FTE, how many positions we can have, right? And so, right now, you know, they each need to teach 30 sections, um, and in order to decrease the number of buildings or travel to or serving would be an increase in FTE, an increase in positions. And so, we're having the discussion. We're having the discussion and, uh, you know, we're, we're finding support. And it is our hope and goal that we could have every teacher have two buildings and have two school families and sort of start to feel that connection. It is, um, it's difficult to travel between buildings with art supplies in your car, right? For, for grade levels. And so, uh, we have solutions, it's, it's, and, and we're feeling supported, it's going to take a little time.
Um, you asked about the six sessions for the RACI. Um, so I'll restate and give a little snippet about each one, a little bit, in case a teacher is watching. Um, so Session One is about, and remember, these are those six professional learning sessions, three hours each, three, three hours and 15 minutes because we have to give, um, the teachers a 15-minute break. Um, Session One is about race and racism. So, really helping them, um, nuance their understanding of race and their understanding of racism, and then think about how their newfound understandings of those definitions then map to the ways they think about Black youth in their classroom, okay? Um, and just so you all have a sense, in these professional learning sessions, we, they're very interactive. We use video clips. They reflect on the clips. We draw from, you know, research, educational research. They reflect on that. They pair and share. They do, um, small group work. So, it's very interactive and they're able to ask us questions and engage with each other. The second sess- session then goes from, okay, now, we have collective understanding of how to define these terms. Let's talk about implicit bias and microaggressions, okay? And we don't only talk about, now they can apply their newfound understandings of race and racism to understanding implicit bias and microaggressions. And think about those in intersectional ways. Uh, and by intersectional, I mean, okay, so how might I make a move to discipline a Black boy that's different from a move I made to discipline a Black girl or a Black trans student or a Black boy who is a Muslim, right? So, now we're thinking across identities, but still thinking about race as central. And what does some of that bias and those microaggressions look like in society, but then in schools? Every session has them take the big concepts to then think about, now, what does this look like with Black students in schools and maybe in my school, in my class? Um, from the macro down to the micro to the introspective. Session Three is about perspective-taking. Like, what does it really mean to engage perspective-taking? And we're intentional about doing that before Session Four, which is about empathy. Because how can I cultivate and embody empathy if I can't first take perspective of others, And then, what does it mean to take perspective of Black youth bodies? And then, be empathetic, not sympathetic. Those are different. And after they've had four of these sessions, which are really heavy, then they go to two data sessions, five and six are data sessions. So, now you've gained this new knowledge, right? This is where we are hypothesizing the consciousness raising is happening. And we're also hypothesizing that in between sessions, they go and talk to their teacher friend. We don't know that, but that's our hypothesis. That's the networking part. Um, and so, they look at the data in their building. What do the numbers look like for Black students, for white students, for students of other races, and how can we see the disproportionality, right? Um, and they interrogate that and examine that and then begin to think about by the end of Session, Session Six, what are we going to do differently in our building? That's our hope. And, and the sessions have been scheduled across the academic year, from this month through May, right? So, the sessions are spread out. And then, what we will do is then let them go off. This school year be over, but we will survey them next year, trying to understand if they do something different in the classroom. And then, you all will be looking for numbers to go down.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Uh, thank you. This is for...
Can you hear me? Okay. This is for Dr. Carter Andrews. I just want to clarify a couple of study design things that you just started to touch on a little bit. Um, is this a, so when you say there are two surveys, is this a pre-post test then? Okay. And are you, i- is that when you're measuring the empathy and critical consciousness?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, my other question is, the interviews with the smaller groups, uh, is that a qualitative portion or how is that being incorporated?
It is. That's a qualitative component, and it's randomized.
Okay.
So, some, you know, some teachers won't, um, uh, it's randomized actually across all the, um, districts in our research. So, there'll be a few teachers from Lansing. What I did not say though is particularly in the treatment buildings, we will interview every principal. So, we will ask them some questions about how PBIS is implemented already in the building. We just want to kind of understand context. So, it is a mixed method study, both quantitative and qualitative.
Thank you. Mrs. Willis?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Uh, first one is for Dr. Carter Andrews. You talked about this work being piloted in Flint, and I was really encouraged by the outcome data. And I'm thinking to myself, if we saw half of that improvement in Lansing, I'd be happy. I'm curious about what, if you are aware of, any resources that were provided to the district to support that work ongoing and what did that look like?
That's a great question, Ms. Willis. I actually was not involved in the Flint pilot.
Okay.
So, I cannot speak to that.
Sure.
Um, and I also can't speak to the resources that were provided to the district. If our project manager was here, she actually was involved in that work and could speak to that. But what I can say is, um, the RACI will be provided, um, in some fashion to the district, right? Um, to be able to, um, the, to utilize those resources beyond the work of the study.
Sure.
Yep.
And so, I asked that question, the, what's underlying it is just sort of raising awareness to make sure that the board is conscious that there might be need to be further investment into supporting that. I know Dr. O'Neal is one person and she's got a, she's developing her DIFL team, um, but we certainly would, I don't think one person could carry that work beyond the pilot once it's done, and so, we would need investments there. Um, second question is for Dr. O'Neal. It's DIFL-related. Um, so I love the screener questions that you use as part of the hiring process. I'm curious if you could speak about any efforts that you've made to assess your existing staff that didn't have that as part of their hiring process, to assess their consciousness and awareness around those topics?
Absolutely. So, uh, the first concrete data, well, there's several. So, uh, as a department, after every, uh, Equity Professional Development session, there is feedback that comes in from, from all levels of stakeholders anonymously. And we scour that after a couple days and we're ready to face it, okay? Because, uh, when it's anonymous, it's a different level of people feeling empowered in their opinions. And so, we have that data. Um, I think the most powerful data that I can speak to is the perception survey through the Systemic Equity Review and that, uh, half of our staff didn't take it despite it being during professional development and, and required. And, and there's layers to that, but I do think that's an important piece of data. And then, we are ongoing and intentional with the survey work, uh, that's happened after Ben has come in. So, Ben and his team has been extremely intentional aligning with equity and asking those difficult questions as well to the ongoing work. So, I'm confident that we will, we will continue to have a pulse on how that shifts.
Sure. And for your DIFL team specifically, is there anything that you focus on as a group to make sure that you're keeping this focus paramount?
Two, a couple months in, I'm really trying to build professional trust with them right now. And I'm trying to model and I'm trying to actively listen and I'm trying to be intentional as they hear me speak right now to reflect what's been happening.
Sure.
Um, beyond that, we are reading Cultivating Genius, which is, uh, Dr. Mohammed's work, Goldie Mohammed's work, um, and that's going to drive our professional development together. And we are lesson planning together. We are reflecting together. And, uh, when they let me know they're comfortable, we'll start taking some perception, deeper perception survey.
That's great.
Thank you. Final question. Uh, what does best practice say, uh, is the frequency of when we should do our weeding of the libraries? So, I'm just curious, so it's on our radar when we should anticipate having to do that again?
I need to differ.
Yeah, Lori. Ideally, library would be two sessions twice a week of 35 minutes, including special sessions for those self-contained classrooms with someone who is trained to, to develop a quality classroom to meet those students' needs where they're at without overstimulating them in the physical spaces of the library for the first time for a full learn. I think it would be adapted based on the situation.
Thank you. And I, that was a really good an- answer. It just, maybe my question wasn't articulated well, I'm sorry. I said, "The weeding of the libraries."
It's a continuing process. We do it all year long. Um, typically, we start with a meeting with the library. The problem with our libraries were in such disarray from lack of time because the most time we get to do it is when we need your inventory. Because that, in order to do that inventory, we physically touch every book in the library. And that's, you know, you take it out, you scan part of it, so you got a day and a half to scan 30,000 books. The more time we have to do that, the more we can be intentional with it, and we've got to deal with all the stacks to take it out. So, we know that we need, when people turn in things, somebody come back with chocolate on it, then you hope it's chocolate? Is it, you know, colored things have fallen apart? Did it take a bath? Was it other things? Those sorts of things are needed. Weeding is constant. It's never just not done. But there needs to be significant time to do that inventory at the end or occasionally or some things. Sarah and I talked about, um, kind of setting that system up so that we have time to do that case without taking away from our students, as well as to be intentional more about the whole recovery.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very pleased with almost all your presentation. Especially, I enjoy all the things you are doing with the teachers. Anything that we do for teachers or educators today is not enough. They deserve really much different than what we gave them from the beginning of their profession. Then I'm very pleased with that. Um, uh, before I came here and I heard another board member say the Equity Audit that we have in Lansing School District, before I came here, I had another meeting, another the audit came out. And they told me, and I suffer when they told me that, the our students are not reading in the level that they're supposed to. Then my question is how this program is aligned on that or how we are going to align with that? It is not yet. And second, what kind of evaluation we are going to have to improve reading in our students?
Absolutely. So, uh, it will take every single one of us across multiple, both departments and in the field. So, every choice we make is toward achievement. So, we are, uh, providing sessions around reading diagnostics so teachers have more tools in their toolbox to assess what exactly the problem is. The gap, uh, is several grades in every classroom. We understand that, uh, no interventionist is going to get us out of this, that we're all reading teachers. And so, we have to, uh, be intentional about training for the skills that we need. Uh, we screen first with a screener using, uh, AmesWeb or NWEA, and then we have protocols to do deeper diagnostic work to find out which of the five areas of reading the child is struggling with. So, we need to know, is it decoding, the sounding out? Is it fluency? Is it vocabulary? Is it comprehension? Phonemic awareness? All those things are important. Uh, this is the first time with the reorganization in a, in a while that we have an instructional division now, uh, dedicated both to coaching and to mentoring. We're even providing mentors, uh, to long-term substitutes to assist with reading instruction. And, uh, for my team specifically, we are going to look at the data, the reading achievement data, and see how we can be more intentional in our instruction as well. Down to incorporating math into phys ed, right? We can be intent, skip counting, times tables, transition times. Art is studying how to do with kindergarten letter name and letter sound integrated in all of their lessons. And so, we just are intentional and we read the research and we work together.
And probably will be a kind of the evaluation of how we are going to see the progress and... And probably will be a kind of the evaluation of how we are going to see the progress and...
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I know the libraries are always the center of learning in the buildings.
I think, yeah, I think we're working towards to get back to that, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Thank you for the presentation. The question that I have is probably a question that you're just going to have to get back to me about, because I know that you're not really familiar with the FLINT data. But what was really, one of the most moving things to me about the presentation came at the very beginning, and it wasn't even read out loud, but the table that talks about the seven, the top seven words in referrals for why African-American kids are suspended versus why white kids are suspended. It just kind of is a thing that's at the bottom of a slide, but it's really, really telling. And so, I'm wondering if, A, I guess, are we tracking that here as part of our study? And then, B, did they track it in FLINT? And did this change? So, because this was really...
Yeah. So, the data before you, that you see, that's disturbing, is taken from the Systemic Equity Review and aligned with her work. So, that data was collected with WestEd, but we also have access to that data through Synergy, and it's provided to schools, I believe, on a weekly basis from Office of Student Culture. We're being, we're working towards making sure it's disaggregated by race, special ed, all of the subgroups, to be able to speak to this more so. But this data specifically is from the Systemic Equity Review, and they were analyzing the Synergy data that we use now. So, it will be, we will be able to track it.
What's interesting about that, that's your data, right? So, like, when we're done with this work, it would be interesting to utilize the same tool that WestEd used to see how this comes out again. So, this is almost like a pre, if you think about it, pre this study, and what would it look like post?
Did they do it anyway? Do they have this?
I don't know. I mean, this is from a tool that WestEd used, so totally different, yeah, not part of this work.
Yeah. One of the nice things about the Equity Audit that was done is that we have this extra information that we can actually use over the REI work that Dr. Carter's doing. So, as Dr. Carter was mentioning, one of the really fascinating things as a kind of a researcher is we will be able to see if her work and the work of the university also impacts this as well. So, you know, we'll get back to you, but we'll be able to track this, you know, pretty much every semester. And then, the hope, of course, is that it works, and we see not only the disproportionality goes down, but even the language that we use changes as well.
And what that would say to, I think something that Ms. Willis said earlier is, then you need to scale up the use of the RACI. Do you see what I'm saying? And so, what kinds of resources would you put into providing that kind of professional learning for teachers? Especially if you have high turnover in building, across buildings, so they're not staying long enough in the same place to shift the culture of that space. So, it really will be interesting to see if the intervention, the 18 hours of professional learning, has some impact on this type of data.
Thank you.